Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the October 2nd edition of the Lexington City Council meeting. It is awesome to be back. I think I was off for the September 4th meeting and we canceled the later meeting. So it's great to be back together and doing the work of our community. Before I start the meeting, I would like to read the guidelines for addressing Lexington City Council. And public comments are always welcome and I invite you to sign up if you wish to speak tonight. I will recognize those signed up during the citizens remarks section of the council's agenda. Citizens who wish to speak to council but neglect to sign up in advance may be permitted to address the council during citizen remarks and comments agenda item, but only at the discretion of the mayor. When speaking to the city council, ask that these guidelines be followed. Once recognized to speak, please step forward at the podium. And for the record, please state your name and if you are a resident of the city of Lexington. If you want to be contacted after the meeting, please provide your information to our clerk, Kate Beard. Please make your comments to the council as a whole and do not engage the audience. Please be brief and state your position and provide facts. Please provide written statements and or supporting materials to the clerk for distribution to the council and the city manager. Debate is prohibited. This is a time for you to share your thoughts and ideas with your city council. Please speak clearly as we want to hear what you have to say. Each speaker is allotted three minutes and individuals may not yield their allotted time to another person. And if you represent a group, five minutes are allotted and you are invited to identify other members of your group who are in attendance. The council or mayor may allow exceptions to these guidelines at their discretion. I remind us all that meetings of the Lexington City Council are formal proceedings and are recorded. And with that, I would like to call our meeting to order. And the first item on the agenda, I'd like to invite up Mr. Will to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If you all will stand. Will, just right here at the podium.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Well, thank you for being with us and working on your success in scouts. Feel free to come, join us anytime and lead us in the future. And we look forward to your leadership when you get into adulthood and have your Eagle Scouts. Keep working hard. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes or corrections. Unless there's an objection, we will approve the agenda as presented. It is approved. Presentations. I'd like to invite up Eric Wilson, Executive Director of the Rockbridge Historical Society for a minute in history. Welcome.
Good evening. I don't usually present in hats, but this was given to me by my counterpart in Lexington, Massachusetts for their 250th year. And we're going to be out of here in time for the Red Sox game. So I'm going to wear it for that, too. I will, it's not the Yankees game, it's the Red Sox game. I'll be back in November. We'll talk about the next exhibit that we're going to do in our series, which will be about Rockbridge and Virginia and the Vietnam War. That'll have a public history component and a round table and open mic and a very similar exhibit to this one. I'll close with saying some things about Appalachian Trail Project, some history hikes that are also in the orbit of the VA 250 American Revolutions Committee, because it is the 100th anniversary of the Appalachian Trail and signals that tradition of revolutionary lands. But what I brought here, I also don't usually travel with seven foot bodyguards, but I've brought two panels from our exhibit. And being double flanked by Liberty is a pretty good thing. These are from the Virginia Museum of History and Culture. It's a 10 banner, 20 panel installation that travels the state. Rockbridge Historical Society was one of two institutions in the Shenandoah Valley, one in 10 in the state, selected to advise our state's flagship history museum on their Commonwealth project. And because of that, we are some of the regional stewards that push out some of the content they collaborate with. So the support you all give to public history here fuels right up to the state. This is the flagship exhibit that's designed both by VMHC and the Jamestown Yorktown Foundation. It's a profound exhibit. You can see it in Richmond. This is the small version. But even these panels, which I had no part in designing, you could tell that I'm not graphic, are beautiful and they're rich, they're comprehensive. I think I talked at a previous meeting about the bicentennial and what we remember of that. It's so striking looking at these, the different kinds of stories we can tell about our national founding and the two and a half centuries since that weren't told at that moment about underrepresented people or the ways in which different kinds of themes and priorities and commitments can be told. The very compliment between Patrick Henry's words, give me liberty, or give me death. And this final question, it is a question as an English teacher, it's give me liberty. It's just an inflection point, but it changes everything. Is democracy a noun? Or is democracy a question? You know, a simple counterpoint like this can do that. And the timeline you see there, you know, from obviously 1619 and before to 2015 and the decade that's passed since tells a range of stories about a struggle for American rights, resilience, all the achievements we've got and all the work that's left to be done. And so in our museum, you can see these in full. We'll be bringing Lexington City Schools and Rockbridge County Schools through both this exhibit and the Vietnam exhibit. And we have our toys exhibit in the other room if the war gets a little heavy for everyone. We're excited. And the third exhibit we'll do next year will be about Free Black Virginians from 1619 to 1865. So to have that commitment, that partnership over three exhibits spanning 18th, 19th, 20th, and 21st century, is something we're really proud to do. I'll close by saying we're looking forward to partnerships with Colonel Hopkins and the Veterans Day Parade and a whole range of things with our Vietnam work. There are two things on November 1st and November 9th with Appalachian Trail Project. We'll have two history hikes on the trail. One from the James River Foot Bridge down to Matt's Creek Shelter and back. The second on the 9th will be up by Coal Mountain. And we've enlisted representatives from the US Forest Service, Natural Bridge State Park, Natural Bridge Trail Club, Appalachian Trail Conservancy, myself and a former student of mine, Lexington City School student, now sophomore at Rockbridge County High School, who's gone to National History Day two years in a row with two projects about local history. The previous one was about VMI and co-education. And last year, Sarah Edgar, she's now sophomore, was honored for her project on the creation of Shenandoah National Park, and not just its creation with the New Deal, but looking at its resettlement, looking at the human consequences of that. So that too is an exciting, I think emblem signal to the community about lifelong education, you know, growing up the next generation of citizens, as well as an opportunity to combine history, recreation, environmental preservation in ways that your council and our citizens are working towards in lots of different ways. So lots coming up. Watch your emails, watch the paper. That next email is going out, I hope, before first pitch. I appreciate your time here to do that. And thank you very much.
Not to slow you down too much, but can you, what are the dates that this exhibit will be at the Historical Society?
Yes. So, so this exhibit is a month long. It's pretty short, 3rd to the 26th. So it opens Friday. You're the first to see these panels. You can't really see the back because I'm going to take them down and get them back to the museum. The Vietnam, the Virginia and Vietnam exhibit will open just before Veterans Day. So we timed that the 7th of, I believe it's the 7th of November to the 15th. We'll have a closing reception there. We're going to have a film series with American Revolution films, Ken Burns 12-hour series launches just after Veterans Day, and we'll look at some of Burns Vietnam series. So November, November and October and December will be pretty heavy. Lots on offer.
Excellent. Rockbridge Historical Society located at the corner of Washington and Randolph Street.
Correct. 101 East Washington. And we're open now Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, 12 to 4, free, welcoming all ages.
Excellent. There's socks. Before you sit down, two things. There is a VMI Lexington connection to the Red Sox. Nate Eaton started the first two games in right field. He's not starting tonight.
Sean Martino was texting me.
All right. So Nate started in right field, but they're throwing a righty tonight, so he won't start. But then also you're featured and the Rockbridge at Play exhibit is featured tonight on the Rockbridge Report that comes out every Thursday. And I encourage everyone to check out the Rockbridge Report's website. There's a fantastic two-minute video. Eric is featured, others are featured, and you get a taste of what that exhibit, what that is. Pretty cool.
It is pretty cool. And I will close on that. We still have an open house this weekend. We're inviting people to bring in their old toys. And it's fun. It's nostalgic to see what people do. And it's actually bringing artifacts in to donate and steward in our collection. So that's brought in, you know, young people, non-engineerians, the first person to come in and give us something was, was a scout, Mr. Glisten, who came in and showed it's called a Ji-ha Wimmy Diddle. And if you don't know what a Ji-ha Wimmy Diddle is, you can come to our museum and see it. You will not get hurt. It will make you laugh. It's a neat, good thing.
What's the oldest toy that's come in?
What, that's a good question. We certainly have some in the 19th, early 19th century. And a lot of these are community sourced donations, like Pat Brady's grandfather, I think, some, some toys from Buffalo Forge that were there. We have scouting materials that were related to Leroy Richardson. We've got sewing things, definitely early 19th century. There's some great pictures of kids hula hooping in front of the state theater in the 1950s. So we're kind of hitting that golden age of American childhood, mass production of toys, but still the homemade things that people make today. Wooden toys from World War II that had to be made because you couldn't make them with metal. So these are the kinds of stories that we can plumb out from all the fun. So thanks. I hadn't known that dropped, but their reporters have done, done lots of good stuff for our community.
Thanks, sir. Thanks for being with us and thanks for your great work in our community. Speaking of great work in the community, I'd like to invite up Colonel, Chairman Colonel Robert Hopkins, give us an update on the Veterans Day Parade. Welcome, Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know how many of you have seen this poster. I've walked a few of them around town, but this was made by Main Street Lexington, a gal named Maren Williams. You might know her.
Alex Cruz. Thank you.
I've got a big problem with the parade. Sorry, I haven't told, told you about it yet, but the problem is we're going to have so many people in the parade, there won't be any spectators. No, seriously, everything is going along just fine. And I'll, I'll give you a summary of where we stand right now. It's been a long time since you all approved my request to have a parade last November, December, whenever it was. There's several reasons for having the parade. The first one that came to my mind was it's the 25th anniversary of the original dedication of the Veterans Memorial, which is all but gone right now and almost moved 20 feet to the north. The second reason is it's the 50th anniversary of the end of the Vietnam War, the 80th anniversary of the end of World War II, the 100th anniversary of the receipt of the World War I German cannon that sits down there on the corner of Washington and Maine up next to the old courthouse. It's also VMI Founder's Day. And of course, it's Veterans Day, the ones that we're honoring. There's two other reasons for the parade. One is to try and educate schoolchildren on the reason that we even have Veterans Day and who veterans are and why they're treated the way they are usually good these days. And in that light, I've contacted the school superintendents for Lexington, Buena Vista, and the county. And those three school districts have responded by providing over 650 students that are going to be in the parade. And they're, most of them are going to have all their teachers with them as well to keep an eye on them and make sure they don't get lost, et cetera. So the response from the schools has been fantastic. Both high school bands are going to be in the parade. Cheerleaders are going to be in the parade. 51 5th graders from Waddell are going to march, walk in the parade and then climb up on the steps of the old courthouse and sing three patriotic songs. I have the professor of music from Washington and Lee. His name is Greg Parker. Some of you probably know him. He's got a wonderful voice. He's going to sing a nice patriotic song at the beginning of the ceremony down there at the old courthouse. A parade wouldn't be a parade without Mark Klein, would it? I called Mark and asked, told him I was organizing a big Veterans Day parade and would he like to be in it? And he said, be in it. I'm going to lead it. And so he's, he is, he's going to be Uncle Sam. And I think he's going to have a float playing, "God Bless the USA," that kind of a popular song these days. And so he'll be in direct competition with the two high school bands and, and VMI band. Oh, and VMI will be providing cadets and some kind of a musical contingent. Fire trucks from Buena Vista, from Lexington, rescue squad vehicles, they're always part of a parade. Mark Klein also has, he showed me pictures, but you know how he's always making things out of fiberglass or whatever he uses? Well, he's made a little train with three passenger cars behind it. And somebody, I guess, you know, it drives on its own. And if I can, I'll see if I can't put three little, you know, some schoolchildren in these little passenger cars, but it looks like it's safe. And then he's also created some kind of a Model T Ford or a Tin Lizzie or something or other. And so he's going to have that in the parade. Lately parades have all had a big wrecker in the parade. Have you seen that? All red, white, and blue and decorated accordingly. The Lexington Women's Club is going to provide ponchos in case it's raining that day, you know, disposable ponchos. They'll pass them out. I called her the other day and I said, up the number from 500 to 650 and then we'll go from there. And also, I think some flags. The little university florist here in town has so kindly offered to blow up 650 balloons, tie strings on them, a little weight on the bottom so that the balloons don't escape up into the sky and take them up to the marshalling place. I mean, the, the response of the citizens in this county and city has been so fulfilling. And I'm so grateful. Everyone, not one person has ever said, no, I don't want to participate or something like that. It's just nice, really nice. And then the, the one challenge that I have, and I'm working on that continuously, I'm in the VFW, I'm in the Military Officers Association, and I have contact information for all those people. But there's still hundreds of veterans out in the county that I don't know how to reach. And so this is why we're doing the marketing effort with posters. And I've been to the Chamber of Commerce and the Visitor Center, Main Street Lexington. They're all helping me with their websites and, and social media type things. So we're trying to get the word. I'm, I'm not very savvy when it comes to social media, but they're all willing to help. And it's, it's nice. So anyway, the, the other reason for the parade is I want to see if families will walk with their veteran. And this is a nice way that families can publicly show their pride in their own veteran and walk with them in a parade. Most people never get to be in a parade. So this is a great opportunity for hundreds and hundreds of people to have some fun and be in a parade. We'll have balloons, we'll have little flags by the hundreds. Lilburn Downing is going to send the entire student body, 190 kids. And Dr. Abbott Keesey, I believe he said he was going to have flag, little flags for them also. But they're going to be spectators. They're not going to walk in the parade. So I've met with the police department, the Public Works people. Do any of you know, oh, Chandra?
Mugginsen?
Yeah, Chandra Mugginsen.
Chandra Mugginsen. Anyway, she's the gal that organizes the Christmas parade. And she is excellent. I met with her just this afternoon, matter of fact. I never knew that there was so much logistics involved with the parade. I'm okay with asking people if they want to be in it and gathering up the participants. But the, how you get everybody where they're supposed to be and moving out at the right time in the right order is a real talent. And I'm, I'm learning. And we'll have it all figured out for sure before November 11th. So anyway, it's going great. And anybody have any questions or anything or suggestions?
Does the council have any questions? Leslie?
I'll just say it sounds wonderful. And I hope you're calling some of the local TV stations, too, so they can.
Yes, we are. The, the one that comes to mind is WSLS. Is that the one down in Roanoke? Yeah, the TV station. I'm sure, I'm waiting on that until I really get all the participants nailed down more precisely. VMI with the new superintendent has been a little bit slow telling me exactly what they're going to provide. I think they're still trying to get their feet on the ground with, with him and, and so on. And so, but yeah, I'm sure that this will get TV coverage. It will. Yeah.
Hoppy, we're very grateful for the extensive work that you've put in this. And I know it's going to be a great event. I just hope that Mark Klein doesn't forget which deal he's going to and shows up as Mick Jagger instead of Uncle Sam. You know, he's got
The Grinch.
Or the Grinch, exactly. But.
I forgot to mention two other people that have been very helpful. I forgot to mention two other people that have been very helpful to me. Spencer Suter, you know, the county administrator, and this gentleman over here, Tom Carroll. And I, I want to thank you publicly, Tom, thanks.
Excellent. Thanks for being with us this evening and look forward to a great event on the 11th.
Thank you.
Line up at 10, step off at 10:30, right? I said, line up at 10 and step off at 10:30.
Stepping off at 10:30 and gonna probably warm up around 9:45.
Very good. Chandra will set you straight. Exciting times, as I like to say in a little hick town with nothing going on, there's a whole lot happening. Next item on our agenda is consideration of the minutes and there are three for your consideration. I think one was emailed earlier today. Unless there's an objection, we'll approve those as presented. Hearing no objections, they are approved. Moving to our citizens' remarks and comments, again, I'll remind folks, if you've signed up, terrific. If you haven't, we will gladly recognize you. But Edward Quabane, I'll invite you to speak first. If you can come to the podium and read the instructions earlier and have you on the, the three minute clock, but we look forward to your message.
Thank you. I'm here to talk about the situation in Gaza, which many organizations have described as a genocide. The latest organization is the United Nations. And our government is involved in this genocide by providing Israel with the ammunition and weapons that it is using to conduct this and also diplomatic cover. So I think as Americans, we need to think about taking a stand on this issue because the, the national government is, is not abiding by the law and abiding by moral, by decency and ethics. And we, 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 we need to stand up and take a stand on this. One thing that is happening is there's some legislation in Congress called HR 3565, which would stop supplying Israel with some ammunition and bombs. And I talked with Ben Klein briefly a month ago about having a meeting. I'm looking for Republicans that could go to a meeting to argue against supporting this genocide. So if you or anyone you know might be, like, know a Republican that might be interested in doing something like that, please let me know. Opinion polls show that most Americans are against this genocide, but it's now reflected in the government policies. So there's this big disconnect between the government policy and what the American public wants. I, I sent you, I think, I emailed you this information, but I also printed it out here if you want these copies that I brought with me. But, so I'm looking for people that could come to a meeting with Ben Klein. Another thing that the council might want to think about doing is passing a resolution against the genocide that I could take with me to a meeting with Ben Klein. So I'd also like to ask the city council to consider that. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Quabane, I appreciate you being here and we will, please leave your information. I know Kate's got your email address and we'll look at, forward to perhaps putting on a forward agenda for consideration, council's consideration. Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to council this evening? Not seeing anyone jumping out of their seats. We will close the citizens' remarks and comments, 7:26, and move to next item, which is consent agenda. There are two items for your consideration and I'll ask for council's thoughtful consideration.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion is second, a roll call vote, Mr. Betts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Driscoll?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander? Motion carries unanimously, thank you all very much. I'm not aware of any unfinished business and moving into reports and communications, Blue Ridge Resource Authority, Mr. Smith?
I may have mentioned this in a previous report about a tire shredder that the authority was looking at, that we've taken delivery on. It's the tune of about $350,000 in, in equipment costs that are anticipated to pay for itself within two to three years. It's, it's quite a spectacle to behold. These guys loading tires into the, into the shredder and they are shredded, they're just ripped apart and destroyed and jettisoned into one of the dumpsters that eventually is gonna be used as, as fill in the landfill. The advantage is before we had staff cutting tires up, it was very manually intensive. This takes a lot of the manual work out of it and, and also takes a lot of, adds a lot of safety to the operation. You don't have guys on the ground lifting tires around and risking personal injury. The, one of, the, one of the major advantages of, of the shredder is that it will, before the tires took a lot of airspace up in the landfill, that is by all means eliminated as they're shredded and, and loaded into the landfill. So just want to bring, bring that exciting news forward to, to the council. If you get a chance to, to go out there and take a look at it, Fred, if it's not running, Fred, our director, may aspire to, to fire it up for you. There's almost, almost a battle within staff to see who gets to operate it because it is, it is something. So that, that concludes my report, if anybody has any questions.
It's always fun talking trash. Thank you, Chuck. The, may, we, it's been a long time since we've had a field trip out to the landfill. It may be something council may, may look to do in the future, but on a pretty warm day. Cause it's really cold out there up on the hill. Main Street Lexington, Mr. Smith?
Did meet with Jeremy Franklin, our director, today for lunch, just to chat things up for my report this evening. Kate, I'll send this to you. The hashtag LexLoveVA bar crawl is set for Saturday, October 11th. About 50 registrations so far with 13 downtown bars and restaurants participating. Day of registration and t-shirt pickup will take place at Sky Bar that morning. The event, if the, if this event is successful, it could become a nice replacement for Restaurant Week on the Main Street Lexington calendar. Downtown scarecrow contest runs October 3rd through 26th. All downtown businesses and offices can participate by decorating a scarecrow that reflects the personality of their business. Downtown trick or treat on Halloween afternoon, 3:30 to 5:00. Entertainment confirmed from Hailstone Rockbridge Ballet and Mark Klein's Skeleton Dance, another one of the talents that he has. Planning underway is for the Christmas holiday events. The Christmas parade theme was announced Wednesday, that being a storybook Christmas. And we're, we're working with our merchants this month on the Shop Small Sweepstakes formerly known as the Love Lex Lotto. And our holiday, online holiday gift guide, finally courthouse square project is, is coming along. As Bob mentioned, the Veterans Memorial will be completed by mid to late October in advance of the Veterans Day Parade on the 11th of November.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any questions for Mr. Smith? Encourage you to, if you're available and in town, to join in the pub crawl for Main Street Lexington. Planning Commission, Ms. Strong?
Planning Commission has met twice since our last regular council meeting. And during that time, the commission discussed the zoning text amendment requested by the Gin Hotel for internally illuminated canopy signs and reviewed sections of the comprehensive plan as part of the five-year review. So as you'll recall, council directed the Planning Commission to draft a zoning ordinance amendment to allow internally illuminated canopy signs in the historic C1 commercial district. And as part of that, council specified that it should only allow white lights. However, the Planning Commission has received comments from a resident who is also a member of the ARB that we should not be too prescriptive in our design so that canopy sign can reflect the style of the building and the business. And you might also note that the Southern Inn sign has colored neon lights. And again, remember that all this will go, since it's in the C1, will go through ARB review. So before the Planning Commission dedicates time discussing light colors, I'd like to get a consensus from council on whether or not you would allow colored lights. I don't want to waste the Planning Commission's time if you're set on it is definitely white lights. So we will discuss this topic at our October 23rd meeting. So please let Arnie or me know before then if you have strong feelings about allowing only white lights for the canopy signs, and this is only for the C1. And in C2, we will allow colored, colored lights. And the Planning Commission will not meet next Thursday, October 9th due to scheduling conflicts and a lack of applications. That's all I have.
I'm hearing correctly, would you like council members to weigh in now if they have an opinion?
If you have a strong feeling now, I would love to hear it, just to kind of get a consensus.
I'll offer my usual thoughts in that if you have an objection to colored lights, state it now, otherwise, let's look forward to seeing what Planning Commission recommends. There may be colors excluded or included to help for, much like with ARB, having certain colors that are acceptable and, but not prescriptive perhaps.
Yeah, and I will just add on that note, in the public comment, the comment are also included that we should be looking at, oh, I just lost it, the white, the color tone was more important. It was more important to help, like you're talking about, maybe not so much.
Brightness.
Yeah.
There are lots of variables that go into colors of lights, even if they're white.
Color temperature, that was.
Yes, yes.
Was there any discussion about whatever they're going to want to install, that it's all one color, even if it's something other than a white light?
We haven't.
It could be a mixture.
Yeah, we haven't gotten that far. It was, again, we kind of started down that path and I said, I pointed out that the directive was white lights only. And so I thought before we spend any time on that, I would check with y'all. And again, I'll just note that the Southern Inn light has several colors on it. I mean, doesn't mean everything, every light has two, but it will go through ARB. But if you, but if that is your preference, let me know now and I can pass that on.
Cause just to be clear, part of what I'm hearing you say, Ms. Alexander, is planning is not looking at the request from the Gin, they're looking at a policy. So, right, okay, yeah.
I don't have a feeling one way or the other about it. It would not be a problem for me. I'm just wondering what it would look like to have different colors? Because I'm not sure we want something to look like a Christmas tree.
Right.
But if we're gonna go to color, perhaps still be somewhat conservative with one color. So that it'd be palatable for everybody.
And, and I would just say the whole intent of entertaining the idea of the canopy lights was because we would like to help our businesses and these types of signs will help potential customers find them or see them. That I would, at this point, I'm open to, that, that's still my philosophy. I'm still open to, I don't want to say anything because that would get you crucified in downtown Lexington, but I'm open to, to the whole, every option. Because like you said, no matter what the Planning Commission puts forward, every individual business will have to come before the ARB to say, here is what we are going to do. So even when P, the Planning Commission says you might be able to do XYZ, everyone will be, will have to apply to the ARB for their specific sign. So at this point, I'm gonna continue to take the approach that I would like to have signs for our businesses that help them attract customers, full stop. And, and I'll pile on, not putting words in your mouth, but in our historic downtown business district, so.
Yes, sir.
Compatible.
Yes.
Okay, well, that's very helpful and just remember, whatever Planning Commission drafts and passes will come to council for final approval, so it can be modified then. But I think you'll, Planning Commission's putting a lot of time and effort in this, so I think it will get something that you like. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that report and the good work of the Planning Commission. Duly noted that you've met twice since our last council meeting. Regional Tourism Board, Mr. Betts?
I have a whole lot to report, other than say that tourism is monitoring whether or not if the government, the federal government shutdown is gonna have any impact on tourism in the, our region, so they're keeping track of that.
It may turn out to be a positive because people aren't working and they have something to, to do.
Hard to say how.
Exactly. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
I have a question for our tourism rep. Have, has tourism or have you or the director been getting any static from some posts about tourism is down 30% because of a two-month reduction in, in lodging taxes within the city?
We have started kind of looking at lodging in general.
I'm, I'm just, I guess my point is, is the messaging from tourism being distributed that because of an anomaly in lodging tax of a year-to-date number, that tourism isn't down 30%? That's the percent, there's a large, large perception that that is the fact.
So I mean, there are newer, there are hotels that opened up in the, in the county. So it's possible that some of that, and my understanding is the pricing of some of the hotels in the county may, may affect where people are staying. So we've, we've talked some about this, but I don't, I don't have any definitive answer for you. But I, but I am aware that maybe the newer hotels have caused a redistribution in where people are staying.
I, I agree with that, I'm just, I just want to make sure that the tourism is communicating that tourism itself, now, I'm not talking about lodging taxes, I'm talking about people coming to Lexington or Rockbridge County is not down 30%.
I don't, yeah, I don't believe that's the case. It may be that...
That's the messaging that I, I'm trying to encourage being distributed out so that a lot of, both, yeah, misinformation, folks that, that like to take negative views on, on city and/or county policies.
We did, we did have a discussion, not last meeting, but the meeting prior to that about, we kind of looked at all the, all the area hotels, like what the occupancy, occupancy rates are. Actually, occupancy, I believe, is up this year, or it has been. But you know, figures are always coming in, so it could be down some the last two months. But when we looked at it, I think part of the trend that was apparent is that there's maybe the newer hotels.
There's more, there's more supply.
Running, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, just.
But I'll keep it, I'll keep it on.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Betts? Thank you, sir. Rockbridge Recreation Organization.
The RARO board of directors met yesterday. I'll just hit a couple of high notes. If you would like to be playing pickleball in our community, RARO is offering pickleball four nights a week now. I mean, that's, that's just tremendous, well, actually five, because it's open court Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, and we've got a league play a couple of Tuesdays and Thursdays. So we're, we're just really running with the pickleball offerings right now. I continue to uplift our executive director and his recruitment of sponsors for scoreboards. I've talked about how our own Brew Baker Sports Complex and Fox Field have been enhanced and are being enhanced by scoreboards. And we have a cool opportunity for sponsorships in Buena Vista at Seacrest Field, that's the diamond at Glenmaui Park. There's not a scoreboard there currently and we have a few sponsors that are coming, stepping forward. And I think that's gonna enhance that facility, it's gonna make that one that much better because it already has lights. And so we've got MBA contracting coming forward with a, with a sponsorship, Southern Virginia University, and then Cornerstone Bank on that scoreboard. And then we have room for one more sponsor that we think we have lined up, but don't want to announce them just yet. But having scoreboards that RARO is initiating the sponsorship for, I mean, we're just, we're taking that off of the localities and we're, we're enhancing the, the opportunities for our kids and, and grownups that play on these fields. RARO continues to get out in the community and is a presence. We were at a Mohawk employee event. We were at a Central Elementary School outreach event, we were at a WNO engagement fair, we were at the VMI Wellness Fair yesterday and they'll be at the WNO Wellness Fair coming up. Just getting out in the community more and more and more, making sure that people know that we're not just for kids. We've got things for adults of all ages. RARO is gonna be right there at the Dunham's ribbon cutting. We're making sure that we get our account as a nonprofit, so we have a new place in the community to get sporting goods equipment for our, for our own programs that we, that we buy. And that kind of dovetails into the fact... And that kind of dovetails into the fact that we, um, for next football season, we do have an intention to have, uh, the, the new, um, helmets, uh, and I'm drawing a blank, the guardian caps, those padded helmets, uh, for our youth. Uh, so uh, we want to provide that level of safety. Uh, and so we're, we're doing that. Also along the lines of football, Buena Vista is going to launch middle school football next year. So, um, five years ago, 10 years ago, this was not even in the realm of possibility that Maury River would have a place for, uh, Lexington, L D M S kids and Maury River kids to play middle school football, and now Buena Vista. And so this has been our dream. However, it shifts our potential offerings of what we offer for that age group, if they can play middle school football. There's not really a, a reason to be duplicative of us trying to offer football for 12-year-olds, 11, you know, 13-year-olds that are in middle school, uh, if they have a chance to play at their school. And so we're looking at how that could affect us, looking really closely. If there happens to be 15 or 20 home schooled children that want to play football, uh, we would field a one team, a senior league team, that then they would play in the Allegheny Youth Football League. But quite honestly, if we don't have the numbers, that could be an end of an era of us not having a senior league, uh, because the middle schools have stepped forward and we are, we are okay with that. But that's, that's a little change for people that have been engaged in, in youth football. Something very exciting that we've been working toward over the last few years is that we are on the cusp of sanctioning girls softball. Uh, we've usually sanctioned, uh, boys, you know, baseball, that gives them all-star opportunities. And we have not been, uh, we have not had the numbers, we haven't had the abilities to, to do that with softball, and we're going to do that now. We've, our softball program has been taking steps forward. Obviously, we have good softball in the community, at the, at the high schools. But this is something good for RARO and it provides those extra opportunities for our girls that are really good to go out in the region and play in all-star competition. So we are super excited about that. Uh, and then just in closing, something that has worked really well for RARO, uh, the last few years is we have, uh, MOUs, we have memorandums of understanding essentially with Rockbridge County Public Schools and Lexington City Schools. They kind of give us access to their gymnasiums or maybe even their fields if they are not being used by their programs. If they're not being used by public school programs, RARO, as the government, uh, funded, if you will, Public Recreation Authority, we kind of have access first, if you will, to, to some of those gym spaces. We don't have that agreement in, with Buena Vista. Uh, and therefore we have never used one of their gyms. We don't use any of their public school facilities, except the Ramsey Center a little bit. And that may be coming to an end, but we are making it an, uh, an attempt again to enter into an MOU with Buena Vista so that, um, we have access to their wonderful facilities, uh, and we're not just, uh, you know, using Rockbridge County's and Lexington's, uh, public school facilities. And so that's something that our executive director is going to reengage with and we're excited. We, we see no reason why it shouldn't happen. Uh, Buena Vista is a great partner in RARO, and I'm sure that their public school system will, will give us the same treatment with an MOU. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir.
Does RARO offer flag football?
Yes, yes, we did. We offered two age groups of flag football this year, uh, the, the tiniest kids, the littlest kids, then, and then the age group up. Last year, we offered the, the youngest, and then this year we added the, the second league because kids that maybe aged out because they played at the youngest rookie or intro, now they can play rookie. And next year, we're going to add yet another age group if the numbers are there. We are going to intend to add, to, to offer that, that age group so that, um, essentially you could play flag football from, uh, ages six or seven, seven, eight, nine, and then nine, 10, uh, three leagues of flag football. And that, um, that is something that, that our board has been leading on. Bryson Adams, specifically from Buena Vista, one of their representatives, uh, has been leading hard on that. Um, and the numbers are there to support it. Um, just this year in flag football, we have 33 flag football players in our intro football league, and we have 19 in our rookie league. So that is, that, that is a significant number of families that are excited to have that, that offering, that two years ago, three years ago, we didn't, you know, we didn't really have.
I was wondering if, um, as, uh, maybe the, for the older kids, the contact football phases out for RARO, if that might present an opportunity to maybe, uh, replace it with flag football, um, for, you know, kids that don't do the contact football at the middle school level.
We would like that to happen. And I think you've heard me say before, we'd love to, uh, offer adult flag football. What's happening right now, just nationally, the NFL is getting involved in flag football, uh, and, and kind of creating a national organization to make, you know, make the NFL feel better probably, but we'll benefit from it at the local level. And so we're trying to just be there and a part of anything that the NFL is kind of pushing down. And if there happens to be, you know, a league in the valley for adults, RARO would like to be there to lead from, from the Rockbridge area that if we have 15 or 20 adults that want to play flag football also, and you might play teams from Roanoke or Harrisonburg or something. But we, we see that shift happening and RARO is trying to be right there, right.
If I'm not mistaken, it's, uh, Olympic sport.
Yeah. You're right. Yes.
Terrific. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Ziegler, for that robust, uh, report on RARO. I know there are lots of great things going on there and, uh, great things in the future. And, uh, before we jump to threshold, uh, Will Ditzel, I was going to tell you that we have lots of committees and different boards that folks on council interact in and, um, welcome any questions you have to support you with your, um, scouting, uh, merit badge. Glad to help, but, uh, appreciate you being here. And if you need to take your father home, if it's getting a little bit late, uh, we certainly understand, but, uh, greatly appreciate you being out here this evening. Uh, next report is, uh, threshold from Ms. Alexander.
Yes, threshold met, uh, last Wednesday. And we continue to work on the score sheet that would be used to place applicants in a priority order. And in doing that, we have two scenarios of households that were made to reflect their home repair needs, their household composition, their income and necessary documentation. And working through those scenarios, uh, we continue to reveal that we will need to continue tweaking, um, as necessary to ensure fair and balanced scoring. We also worked on the current repair list to determine what is deemed an emergency. And we decided, uh, we needed objective criteria, that that would be necessary. And so um, suggested referring to the standards that are used by HUD in their housing inspection program as a guide to determine what their objective criteria looks like. It would prevent us from being subjective in scoring of necessary repairs versus necessary emergency repairs that would be addressing health and safety matters. We discussed not only the scoring, but the inspection and, and at what level do we make some of those repairs in terms of bringing problems, problems up to code? And the funding, um, challenges we could have, uh, in our contingency, uh, plans. There was a question to come up about how to manage displacing a household if the repairs required moving out temporarily. And it was mentioned that the homeowner's insurance policies may or may not address that, but we will continue that discussion at a later date. Next on the agenda was a request to adapt, adapt our, um, bylaws to allow absent members to meet by way of Zoom as city council does, and it will be discussed at the next meeting after consultation with the city manager and the city attorney. Because we want to have everything in place well in advance of mid-January's kickoff, we decided to meet, uh, from four to 5:30, not four to 5:00 P. M. on the fourth Thursdays. Plus, we'll have the normal holiday scheduling conflicts that will be coming up. But the next meeting is at least, um, on October 22nd from four to 5:30 in the temporary city hall.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Alexander.
Are we, is threshold going to meet? Has, has there been any decision about the November and December meetings?
No, we haven't gotten that far, but we'll definitely have to address that, um, next meeting.
Any other questions for Ms. Alexander? Very good. Uh, from my report, um, a, uh, great deal of gratitude to, uh, Ms. Alexander for pitch hitting for me while I was out of the country in, uh, early September. And thank you, uh, council for carrying on, doing the good work that, uh, council does. Um, had a great time in Italy. Tell you all about it at another time, but, uh, um, it's fascinating to see how some of the rest of the world operates and, uh, moves. The one thing I'll share with you, if you ever go to Venice, the amazing thing in Venice, Italy is there is virtually no grass. It is an island, but there are, uh, I think two parks that are found, otherwise it's, uh, would be on private property that you can't see behind gates and things of that nature, but a lot of stone. Um, but additionally for, um, uh, this evening, there's been a request for two committees to be created, um, to collaborate with, uh, Rockbridge County, uh, regarding Morris Creek. And for that, I would like to, uh, recommend myself and, uh, Mr. Smith to be the representatives. And, um, the, uh, out, outgrowth of the, uh, RARO study from the original, um, presentation by RARO in January was for, um, a, a committee to form to, uh, meet and advise, uh, RARO. And for that, I would like to, um, recommend Jason Melvin and David Ziegler to carry, uh, to serve in, in the capacity, uh, representing the city for, um, the joint, uh, committee for RARO. Um, and, uh, offer those, if there's no objection to those appointments, we will, uh, thank Mr. Smith in advance and Mr. Ziegler in advance, as well as, uh, Mr. Melvin for their service on these committees. And with that, I'll transfer to the, uh, pass along to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. A few items to report this evening. Um, earlier today, we had a traffic controller at the intersection of Diamond and North Main that was struck by a car. Uh, I was not aware of the incident until I heard about it from council member Smith. By the time I got out there to inspect it with the public works director, the public works crew had already had it fixed and erected, and I just wanted to compliment, uh, how quickly they responded and, and, uh, how it, it didn't look like there had been any problem at all after they were finished. I couldn't tell what hole had been struck. Um, in other mishap news, um, earlier this week, a subcontractor working at the city hall, uh, renovation project cut a key cable uh, that was providing, that provides internet and email servers for the city organization. So we were without full computing capabilities Monday evening and through the morning of Tuesday. Uh, it was fixed around noon with help from Raina, which we appreciate. I wanted to, uh, publicly thank Nathan Straub for his work, uh, troubleshooting all of that and getting that seamlessly uh, fixed and restored, juggling the needs of many different I T uh, users, uh, who were, um, un, ill at ease with the lack of ability to get their jobs done. So Nathan does a great job for Lexington City Schools and the city of Lexington, and I just simply wanted to recognize him for his great work earlier this week. A reminder to council, I'd like to invite you to the Rockstar Roofs Summit to be held on October 21st at the Virginia Horse Center. The event is free and it's open to the general public as well. And if you're interested in learning more about that, I encourage you to go to the Lexington Rockbridge Area Chamber of Commerce where you can register for that event. It's on their website. Uh, as I mentioned, it's free and it includes, uh, uh, lunch. So, uh, you know, another reason to go. As you may recall, uh, staff has engaged public sector search and consulting to assist the city with the recruitment of our next chief of police. Um, I'm working with the local representative of this organization, Mr. Justin Dahl. Uh, Justin is a retired chief of police from Anchorage, Alaska, and he and his wife moved to our area, uh, about in the last five years. Uh, buying a horse farm about 15 miles outside of Lexington, so he's quite close. And, um, we're still working out some details about what that process is going to look like, but I wanted to make you aware that I'll be forming at least two resident citizen stakeholder advisory committees uh, to help, uh, me, uh, with the process of narrowing down candidates to bring for an in-person interview, which will likely be uh, the first week in January. Um, and so I'll be putting out some information very soon, which will be inviting residents to express an interest in, in serving in that capacity. Um, there'll be a limited number of spots, you know, you can't have too many people on an interview panel or on an advisory panel. Uh, but for those who aren't, uh, willing to make that kind of commitment to serve on that advisory panel, we're also baking into the process an opportunity for a general gathering in the evening, uh, for the community to meet the various candidates who we invite to that process. So even if you can't make that level of commitment or aren't on, on that advisory panel, there'll be opportunities for residents to get to meet the candidates and then to provide feedback, uh, to the city manager and city council as we, uh, hone in on that process. So stay tuned for more details. I'll be working on a memorandum for council's benefit, laying out the schedule and opportunities for, um, community input. And just a reminder that next week we have a, a scheduled work session for October 7th, that's Tuesday. That will be, uh, led by Commissioner of Revenue Karen Roundy and the consultant who is managing our quadrennial property tax reassessment process. We do not have a packet that will be going out on that, uh, for tomorrow's, uh, agenda packet, although Ms. Beard will be publishing an agenda, uh, which will be going out on our website tomorrow and email to you as well. Uh, that is an opportunity for us to ask questions about how the reassessment process works, uh, how properties are valued, how, uh, sales data affects things, just a variety of topics. Uh, we haven't done this for a few years. We do this every, every four years and, uh, uh, so it's an, an important opportunity for us to understand what we're looking at. That, that process should be completed in time for our F Y 27 budget process. Happy to answer any questions about these or other topics.
Uh, just to affirm the time you said Tuesday, the 7th?
Uh, I believe the time is 6:00 P. M.
Six at city hall?
Yes. And if it's not, uh, the agenda tomorrow, we'll probably declare that it's 6:00.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions for the city manager?
I'm gonna, uh, since the, uh, city manager was uplifting a couple of, uh, folks in the city, I just want to quick, do a, do a quick uplift that I enjoy doing sometimes. Uh, earlier this week, there was a middle school volleyball match at L D M S. And one of the great athletes on the L D M S, uh, volleyball team injured herself. And it was, it was a bad injury and, and, but she's going to make a, a good recovery. Uh, but when she injured herself, it was one of those injuries where the gym goes silent. And the girls on the team didn't like what they saw, and it was kind of hard on them. And so there was, there was a lot of emotion and there were silence and people didn't know what to do. And, uh, it was, it was a very unique thing because in two years of watching girls volleyball at L D M S, I haven't seen that. And so what transpired after that bad injury was very impressive, and I just want to share it. Uh, Sergeant Curry was there, our school resource officer, Sergeant Lewis was there. Sergeant Curry, of course, has a background as an E M T and an E R nurse. So she stepped forward, uh, rendering first aid to the young lady. The young lady's parents were there, which was helpful. Uh, Sergeant Lewis called the rescue squad. The rescue squad, squad was there within minutes. As we, as they always are, they're, they're there within minutes. But what also was happening all about that, that time was what to do with the young athletes that were on the teams and coming to middle school, where they were great sports. They, they kind of went together and then they went into their locker room. And our athletes were just kind of stunned there for, for a minute. And Coach Hamilton, Joanna Hamilton, Coach Sisson, Jessica Sisson, kind of were with their athlete who was injured, then they turned their attention to our athletes and kind of said, go into the locker room. Well, Ms. Bridge was there, who is a beloved teacher at L D M S, and she said, I'll take all the girls, all the athletes and kind of make sure they're okay. So Ms. Bridge took them into the, into the locker room. Dr. Kisi was there organizing. Uh, and it was just, you know, time stopped for about 20 minutes. It was one of those types of injuries where you couldn't move the athlete for a little while. Um, but we were really fortunate that the police officers were there, Sergeant Curry. Uh, we were really fortunate that, that the rescue squad was there within absolute minutes. We were lucky that the professionalism of Dr. Kisi and his staff and these coaches. And, you know, it was just, you hate to see it, but when there's a reaction that you can be proud of, of our professionals, I thought I'd share it. Uh, and so I can't say enough about, about, about what I witnessed from the bleachers and hope that the athlete makes a full recovery. And I, and I think she will, I think she's going to be fine. Uh, it's a great team. They're worried about their, their teammate, but just wanted to share that with everyone that may not see that otherwise.
Thank you, sir. Greatly appreciate it. And we are fortunate for the quality of people that we have, uh, working with our children in our school division. Any other questions for the city manager? Uh, hearing none. Uh, city attorney?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I have nothing to report in particular, other than that the other Mr. Carroll regrets that he couldn't be, but I appreciate the opportunity to see.
Very good. Thanks for being with us. Any questions for our? Very good. Thanks for being with us. Any questions for our substitute attorney? Very good. Next item, new business consideration resolution 2025 dash 13. Something about blanket funding.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a more of a housekeeping issue. We work with VDOT, the Virginia Department of Transportation, as you know, from time to time, and, and they, they request that we have a blanket resolution and a, and a ability for grant submissions. This was first done in 2022, but from time to time, we have to update this. And so this is basically a refresh of a standard housekeeping issue with VDOT. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about this resolution. But I, I recommend we approve it again as we did in 2022.
And for those of you who read it the way I did, we are not buying any blankets.
Correct me if I'm wrong, is, was part of this about the cost savings about paving? Am I, am I, am I thinking about that?
Sorry, no, that was a memorandum that I didn't reference in my city manager report, but I'm happy to talk about that if you're, if you want to go back to that. I had two, two reports that I, I had put into the packet, which were more for your situational awareness. But I'm, I'm happy to answer questions about those later or now, whatever.
Sure. So, and I just want to make sure I'm talking about the right topic. Is this, this is related to that or no?
This is not related to the paving memorandum and the paving bids that we opened.
Yeah, the paving, yeah. So just the thought on that, I was wondering if we could, the two projects on the paving, if we could just push them to just recognize the cost savings and then push those to F Y twenty twenty seven.
Well, there were.
It was like the, the kids place parking lot.
We can do that. That's not my preferred approach, but I'm happy to. If, if council wants to do that, I certainly don't want to execute that paving of the Brew Baker. It was the kids place parking lot as well as the, the parking area over by the municipal outdoor pool. We could defer those.
I was going to say that that is not completely unrelated to this. So looking at this item of new business, let's, let's deal with that first and then, you're fine. Glad to talk about it, especially if, if it was related. But V, VDOT is involved in both. But the memo is here for the new business and your consideration. Are there any questions related to this 15 dot one, 2025 dash 13 resolution?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 2025 dash 13, a resolution updating Lexington's blanket funding commitment and grant submission approvals for VDOT related projects.
Second?
Have a motion of second. Any discussion? Hearing none, a roll call vote. Ms. Strong? Mr. Ziegler? Mr. Betts? Mr. Driscoll? Mr. Smith? Ms. Alexander? Motion carries unanimously. Happy to go back and revisit the topic with the paving. You, you would.
Yes, I'm sorry. I was. But yeah, I just with the, I think it was mentioned in the memo, basically just that we may have some decreasing revenues and whatnot. And just to potentially kind of just wait and see about paving. I, I know that we could still recognize some cost savings, but I know we've also asked some of our departments to.
Tighten the belt?
Tighten the belt. And that's if, if since it's currently unbudgeted, could maybe consider pushing into next fiscal year, making those projects a priority in the next fiscal year and then just recognizing the cost savings for, for this year would just be a thought.
If you're prepared to respond, yeah.
I am, we're happy to do that if that's council's pleasure. In, in order, that's a different approach from what I recommend. And, and I feel I have the authority to take, however. So if that is council's pleasure, I would simply ask you to pass a motion to direct me to do that. And I'll gladly do that. Just a reminder to, to perhaps explain just a couple of things and, and make sure that we're all on the same page. And then, and then sensitive to the, the cost savings concerns that you mentioned, Mr. Betts. So our budget for paving is $1,147,000 and $489. The bids came in at slightly over 1 million. And when we pull out one, one street Colonial Lane, which we're not going to do, if we just award the, the projects that are listed here, the, the streets that are listed here, pulling Colonial Lane out, we will spend $157,000 less than what is budgeted. And, and that would then just accrue to the general fund as, as savings that will be available next year. And that is a perfectly viable option. What I am recommending and what I was hoping to do, unless directed otherwise by council, is to take some of that $157,000 where the projects are beneath what we had budgeted and spend some of that on the paving at, at the parking lots near Kids Place and near the outdoor municipal pool. I've spent a little bit more time at the municipal pool parking lot and, and it's in, in, in not great shape. We can certainly defer it. It's not falling apart. But I think it would be a good opportunity while we're fixing some of the other parking lots to tackle those at the same time. We estimate the cost of doing that, that additional parking work to be $115,000. Remember, we have $157,000 of, of savings that's available resource in our budget. And, and I'm suggesting that we only, we spend 115 of that 157 available on those parking lots, which would still leave about $42,000 of savings over what is in the budget to do all that paving work. And so if, if we can either pull out that, that Brew Baker parking lots and, and generate 157,000 in savings, or if we pave it, we will still have about $42,000 of savings. The one other element that I mentioned in the, in the report is we are including paving all the roads in Providence Hill that have, have endured the Columbia Gas main. We're partnering with Columbia. They're going to provide us $300,000 of revenues. And we did not budget that revenue. So that increases our available revenue and it means we, we effectively have $457,000 of available resource. And I'm suggesting that we spend 115,000 on the parking lot. And that's work that I feel we should do since we have a good contract, we have a good unit price. And, and the contractors here, we're doing some other parking lots. I think it just takes, makes sense to do that. Having said that, I understand and appreciate that we are making budget cuts. But I think where, where you, where you, your, your position might prevail is when we come back to council, probably at the next meeting, October 16th. Remember, we're going to have anywhere from 300 to 340,000 dollars of available resource. I was going to recommend that we do some additional streets, the next on the pavement inventory. And, and, and certainly I'll, I'll follow whatever direction council wishes to do. But if you want to put all of that money back into the general fund, absolutely, we'll do that. I was going to recommend that we do probably Edmondson and Sellers are, are the next, having spoken with the public works director, but we'll present all of that in, in, in a, at your next meeting. So my advice to council is that we proceed to implement what's already budgeted. It'll still generate $42,000 of, of savings over what's budgeted and return that money to the general fund. And it does accomplish the parking lot. Having said all that, that was not part of the original program and I'll be happy to follow council's direction.
I would, I would second that the municipal pool parking lot is in desperate need. It's embarrassing to, to drive in that parking lot. It, it is not equal to the other quality of everything in the city of Lexington. It's, it's a horrible parking lot and it's a parking lot that every visitor, when we play baseball games up there at the pool or whatever, encounters. So I hope we get that parking lot done. It needs it. I also was very intrigued by the, the desire to maybe fix Jefferson Street. With the, with, with the way I justify that is the Columbia Gas coming through with $300,000. And yet we're going to come behind them in Providence Hill with our budgeted dollars. But I don't mean to disparage Columbia Gas, but the way that they left Jefferson a year or two ago, they should be embarrassed. And so if they're not going to fix it the right way, we, we need to fix it. It's a main thoroughfare you suggested in here. Jefferson, I would hope that we could, we could improve that section that Columbia tore up. So I would, I would love to continue with the paving efforts that you're suggesting, even still realizing potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars of savings when we really get down to the end of it, but, but following through on what, what you've suggested.
I would also agree with the city manager's recommendation. Would like to ask, what roughly is the schedule for paving? Will this occur in the fall or in the spring?
We're working to get this done in, in the fall this year. I think the residents of Providence Hill would appreciate that. They've been enduring the construction and the disruption. So that is certainly our endeavor. We think the, we've communicated with the contractor that that's our expectation. It is allowed for them to do it in the spring under the contract, but we're hoping they'll get it done and we think they're ready to mobilize fairly soon.
Thank you. My neighbors will appreciate it and they were worried about the plowing coming through if it wasn't done beforehand.
The plowing would only make it worse. But going back to what Nick said, I can appreciate what, you know, you're thinking about how that would work. But when you look at it from a public works management perspective, they have a contractor, they have the estimates. And if that contractor is on schedule, ready to go, but you defer something for another time, it could increase the costs and they may not even be available when you want them to be.
Yes, terrific ideas for saving money, but there's the old penny wise and pound foolish. But in light of the city manager's explanation and details, I hope that suffices.
I just want to be cognizant of trying to find savings where we can and where we have new, unexpected revenue or unbudgeted revenue or cost savings to see while things might get tighter to see what we can do.
Absolutely.
And Tom, I'm sure your public works is thinking about it, how the Columbia Gas project is, is progressing kind of on Taylor Street, Preston, just that direction, I guess, is pretty torn up. And those residents are, are dealing with it right now. Those roads are closed every day. And, and hopefully we're just watching when Columbia Gas finishes that intrusion in their neighborhood and then we'll be ready to, to improve that for, for those residents too.
That's, that's exactly right. And just following up on, on council member Strong's comments. You know, those residents on those streets that you just mentioned, Varner, Taylor, Short, some of those other streets, they're enduring that right now. That work by Columbia Gas will continue probably into the first of the year. So Columbia Gas will not be in a position to repave those streets until next spring. We're hoping that the streets that were in front of them up in Providence Hill will, will get paved, both, both travel lanes by the city's contractor this fall. So we've communicated on behalf of those residents and as stewards of the streets that we expect Columbia Gas to pave both travel lanes on those narrower streets closer to the central business district.
Thank you for, for doing that.
Yes, they what we've experienced in the past with Columbia Gas has been substandard. And I think council, I think staff's hearing loud and clear that council has an expectation that Columbia Gas will be a good partner and neighbor and leave it at least as fine as they found it, if not better. In the spirit of scouting, leave it better than you found it. Thank you. Anything else for the city manager? Questions? Comments? If not, we do have a closed meeting scheduled. I don't anticipate that we'll be taking the action other than adjourning our meeting when we come out of closed session. And at this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Alexander to read us into the closed session.
I move that Lexington City Council convene in closed meeting, one pursuant to Virginia Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711 A3 for the purpose of discussing the disposition of city-owned real property along Spotswood Drive and Waddell Street for a public purpose where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the city's bargaining position or negotiating strategy. And two pursuant to Virginia Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711 A8 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel retained by the city regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Second?
Thank you for the second. This requires a roll call vote. Ms. Strong? Mr. Smith? Ziegler? Mr. Driscoll? Mr. Betts? Mayor Friedman? I vote aye. Thank you. We'll now be able to go into closed meeting.